Call to order the August 8, 2023 Regular Town Council Meeting at 6:01. Please stand and join me for the pledge.
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First off, we're going to have public comment. Erica Fizell, please approach. Do you want to just wait for the? Okay. Well, we're going to move in. That's the only one we have signed up. We're going to move on to the special presentation proclamation.
Whereas Healthy West Orange inspires healthy behaviors and provides resources to help residents make better lifestyle choices, and whereas Healthy West Orange champions health and wellness activities, and whereas Healthy West Orange unites health-minded organizations for whom healthy community provides meaningful benefits, and whereas Healthy West Orange advocates for healthy community decisions and encourage local leaders to keep their communities' health and wellness in their top priorities, and whereas Healthy West Orange declares the third Friday in September is the annual West Orange Healthy Selfie Day, therefore it is a great pleasure and privilege as a member of the Windermere Town Council to declare Friday, September 15, 2023, as the West Orange Healthy Selfie Day, and I urge all citizens to join in supporting this initiative.
We're going to have the second reading, the ordinance 2023-02, Windermere Downtown Property
Good evening, everyone.
Development Agreement for Final Development Plan, Major Development Site Plan, and Attachments.
My name is Erica Fizell, and I am the Community Resource Specialist for Healthy West Orange.
So at 6:05, I close the Regular Town Council Meeting and open up the public hearing.
At HWO, we like to celebrate healthy selfie in two major ways. We encourage you to join us for our in-person 5K that takes place September 9, beginning
Mr. Brad.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams.
at 7:30 a.m. at Chapin Station along the West Orange Trail.
Again, I'm Brad Quinnis Thoitren, serving as your contracted town planner this evening.
And of course, we encourage you to snap a healthy selfie.
As you said, we have the final second, final reading or second reading for ordinance 2023.
So just submit a photo of you doing anything showing us your favorite way of being healthy before September 14, and you will be entered in a chance to win our $500 grand healthy
What this is, this is for the approval of the final development plan as well as the
selfie prize.
major site plan for the Windermere Downtown Properties Redevelopment Project, also known
Thank you.
locally here as the 500 Block Project, redevelopment project here across the street at the corner of Main Street and East 6th Avenue. So I have a short presentation to go through to kind of give you all an overview and highlight of it. Again, I won't go through the location. Again, it's here at the corner of 6th and East and Main Street, East 6th Avenue and Main Street. The property's a little bit over two acres, and the property owner's Downtown Windermere Properties LLC, and the applicant developer is V3 Capital, and that's the crew you see sitting over there. So they are here this evening. This project has been going on for a few years now. We started in 2019 with a pre-application meeting. In 2020, it went through a conceptual review through the Development Review Board members, and then in 2021, it went again to the Development Review Board, then to the Town Council for the approval of the preliminary development plan, which was approved by the Town Council under ordinance 2021-01. So they did have the preliminary development plan approved, and also the planned unit development or the PUD zoning was then put in place as well with that ordinance when that was approved. So since that point, now they've moved forward into what we've been going through since that point is the final developments for this project, and that's where we are this evening. They have submitted that. Tonight is the last of the two public hearings for that. Again, I'll say last depending on your action tonight, but it's scheduled to be the last public hearing for this project this evening. So they are at the end of this process. If this is approved this evening, just real quick, is what will happen then is then it'll be time for us to issue the permits for construction to begin. Initially, it'll be site development and then, and then building after that. So this is that last process prior to the actual permitting. Thank you, Brad. The overview of the PUD. So why this is a PUD, it's in your Town Center Overlay District Plan. Any development within this area of the town is required to go through a planned unit development, which you all, like I said previously, approved the PUD in 2021. And the development that occurs here is required to be consistent with the guidelines that you have in your Town Center Guidelines that were developed in 2004, so which relate to the site layout, building look and design, parking and those kinds of things. So those are all things that are part of this review. This is the master plan, just to say, show that this is within your downtown master plan. It's circled in the blue circle. This is, that's the project site. So this 2004 to be developed as part of, redeveloped as being proposed this evening. What you see there on that plan, which is carried through in the plan in front of you this evening, is the buildings are required under this master plan to be at the front or along Main Street, and then in the back part along Oakdale's where the parking and landscaping and things are, which is what is proposed with the project this evening. Thank you, sir. Next. Again, this is your comprehensive plan. The property, again, is circled in that light blue, so it is within your comprehensive plan, identified as part of the Town Center Overlay District. One of the questions we got early on in this process was, well, there's yellow residential there. You know, how could this happen? Well, it's because it's in that Town Center Overlay District within your comprehensive plan that calls for this type of development on that property. So there's two designations within your comp plan. It's within that area, so it's consistent with your comp plan as well as your town master plan. Next, please. As the council, I'm sure, remembers very well, one of the requirements of that ordinance from 2001 was the public workshops with the Town Council prior to coming forward with these hearings. So you did hold four public workshops with the developer and going through different versions of the plan and discussions on many issues. Those aren't all the issues you all discussed, but those are the main ones, parking, the trees, building design, and the buffering and compatibility with adjacent neighborhoods. So all, and I will say, and I think you'll see, the plans have evolved over that time from when we started on March 3 of 2022 to sitting today in August of 2023. So that is the process that they've been through for almost the last year. So this is the master plan that's before you this evening. This is what they submitted for your consideration review, or this is the site plan, not master. This is their site plan. So generally, what I'll go over here, and I'll get into more specifics a little bit later, is the buildings you can see there, they're fronting on Main Street at the corner of Main and E6, which is consistent with the master plan. They're built, your code and your master plan have what's called a build-to line as opposed to a setback. Buildings are required to build to the property line instead of being pushed from the property line. So that's why you see them like that. One of the changes you see here that was from previous plans, you saw at the corner at Main and 6th, where before that building was a corner, 90-degree angle, they've actually now cut that off, they canner levered it, and cut it at an angle, which then brings it back a little bit from that corner and gives it kind of that softer connection to that corner. They also did that on the other corner as well to the building. So those corners are now not square any longer, they're now angled. That's a significant change. The square footage of the buildings, the 19,575 square feet, that is within the total allowance. You may recall in 2021, it was approximately 21,000 square feet. They were originally anticipating, this is coming in at the 19,725 square feet. So they are within that requirement. These buildings are one-story buildings. There are towers, I'll call them towers on either end, I'll get to those here in a little bit with the property. Also on the site plan to see is, you know, they have, the courtyard is here, which opens out to Main Street and also back into the property, into the project, in the parking, with the tree here being part of that courtyard and being protected. On the, on the parking, big discussion that we had throughout the process. So where they are today with the parking, they are at four square feet. So they are me, number, which was something that was discussed in the workshops, in those public workshops with the council, is they added shared parking spaces here within the loading zone, and they also added a space here right around in here where there was a small little light landscape island and replaced that with another parking. That landscape island was the green area here for the septic, so really it wasn't doing a whole lot. So that's how they get those additional parking spaces to do that. The spaces that they're adding here, we did check with the COE Fire, make sure that they were comfortable with that being used, and they are. They had no concerns or objections to that because it will be managed, it will be regulated, and that is a condition within. So we got the okay from Fire, that that is an acceptable arrangement for the parking. So they are at the four units per, or four spaces per thousand square feet, which is the requirement of your code. The other part I wanted to speak on this slide is a little bit about the transportation. Under your master plan, the requirement is a right-in, right-out only here at 6th. So that's what they are doing. They have a right-in only and a right-out. Back in 2021, when the traffic study was done for this project, the result of that study showed that there was a need for them to provide a right-turn lane into their property, into their project. So they are, they will be building that and provide, and that's this lane here, to help move the traffic out of the queue to get it in here. That was, so that was an outcome of that traffic study in 2021, and that's how that is set up. On this side, we have the access to 5th Avenue, East 5th Avenue, and they did make a change to this area here that was talked about during the public workshops with Town Council. They did bring this back, they put in a crosswalk to make that a better flow for the truck routing for that. So they did, and I can let them speak more specific to that, but they did make that change. That is what they've done for the traffic. The other part about traffic I'll speak about now is being required to provide a transportation, I'll call mitigation fee as part of the development agreement, which we, which has been talked about from the beginning of this project. So what that fee is, it's at approximately $47,000, and that fee is based on their share of the potential costs of an improvement to the roundabout at Main and 6th. Not the whole cost, but their proportionate share of that, as well as the cost of putting a pedestrian crossing at Oakdale and 6th, the ones that they just recently approved to be put in, that type of, that type of crossing there. So that's where that number comes from, that's how we got to that, that number. They are required to make that payment to the town as part of their permitting for that, for their mitigation. There's been a lot of discussion is, as we spoke, there is, we, everybody accepts and understands or is significant traffics, concerns with traffic, but, you know, under the code, under state law, we can't hold a developer responsible for an existing problem. We can't have a developer provide an improvement or money to mitigate to help that, which is what's happening here, but we can't necessarily, we can't reject them based on there's just too much traffic there, out there today. So that's how about traffic. Next, please. We'll get into more specifics here to the next part. So here's the utility plan, we'll talk about utilities. So utilities, they are connecting to Orange County Utilities for water, so they will, but the agreement says that you have before you this evening, that's fully their responsibility and their cost, any improvements that are needed to make that connection, they have to do that. I know they're in the process right now of going through that process with Orange County Utilities to make, for that connection to occur. So they will be connecting to Orange County Water. Prior to us issuing any site development permit, we'll have to get that final approval from Orange County Utilities. I can also let the council know, I had my engineers that did work on the water master plan here for the town review it to make sure it wasn't counter to what was done in that, and it is not. It's consistent with what was done in that water master plan that was done for the town as well. So there was no concerns with that. In terms of wastewater, the drain field here, they are going to be having an onsite wastewater system, septic system. That is required to get permitting through the Orange County Health Department, Florida Department of Health. I believe they're in that process currently as well. So again, we will not be able to issue any permit for this project to move forward until they get through that final permitting process with the Orange County Health Department for their wastewater system, but that's how they're doing it. Again, and also the town has no obligation or financial responsibility for any improvements that they need to do related to their wastewater. So that is the general overview of the utilities. In terms of grading and drainage, drainage plan, they are doing primarily in ground storage, these are the tubes that are in the ground for the storage for the stormwater system. They are not required under the South Florida Water Management District to get an actual permit, they are exempt, but under what's called the 10-2 rule, the property's less than 10 acres, and there's two acres or less of impervious. However, they still have to meet the permitting criteria of the Water Management District. So they, they're not exempt from actually doing what they're supposed to do. So they have to design to that criteria, and they also have to notify the district. So we did review it, my stormwater engineers did review it, have designed it consistent with the South Florida Water Management District criteria for that project. Again, I can let the project engineer give you more details about it, but that's the process that they've gone through. And the other part of this that I want to make sure that everybody understands is, part of this also includes some pervious pavers within their project. The pavers they're using, our engineers, again, we reviewed it, our engineers use it as well. It is a good product, but it does require maintenance. You'll see within the agreement, we do call for them to write a maintenance plan for how they'll maintain those pervious areas to ensure they may, they continue to function as they're intended to function. And of course, like anybody, if the system doesn't work as it's supposed to, they have to correct it. So that's how the stormwater is being addressed. Again, the town has no financial obligation or responsibility for any of that work either within their stormwater system. Trees. So we, as the council's aware, lots of discussion about the trees. There was several meetings with the Tree Board as well as onsite. This is a nice color diagram that's correct, showing the trees that are being maintained or being taken down. This is a inventory table that also provides that specific inventory of that. The end of that story is of the trees that are being removed, of trees that are being removed on their property, on their site, on their property. They are being required to mitigate for that removal of that 151 inches of trees. And the mitigation that's being proposed, that's within your development agreement, which the Tree Board is also, has approved and they endorsed it, was that they would actually be donating to the town 151 inches of trees for then the Tree Board to work with the council on where those should go around the town. A place could be within the Oakdale right-of-way to enhance the trees, you know, between there and the neighbors to the other side. So that is the mitigation that's proposed for the removal of the trees. And we'll get to the Tree Board. So the Tree Board, as I said, they did review this, had several meetings about this. At their May 18 meeting this year, they did recommend approval to the DRB and to the Town Council of this plan. They did support the tree mitigation plan, the tree protection plan that's in there in your plans that you have today because it is consistent with your code. But it's important that it is enforced and maintained through the project. So we maintain the condition that was from your 2020 ordinance that says they have to keep arborists on staff onsite while they go through construction, you know, to ensure they maintain that, and the town will hire our own independent person to go out and monitor, to ensure that they do what's required to protect, to properly protect the trees that are being maintained and not being taken out, and to make sure they do the things that they're supposed to do. So there will be oversight for that, for that project. The Tree Board, they did ask some replacement of some species of trees. The applicant has made those swaps as the Tree Board requested. They also had a concern that a earlier version, and it may be the one that Development Review Board had, they were showing, putting new landscaping out on Main Street in front, and they were just concerned about doing that. The plans you have tonight, they are not changing out that landscaping on Main Street, pulled that out of their plan. So what you'll see on there now just says, existing tree do remain. So that, that has been removed, so they have been reflected of that. But the Tree Board did support that donation program of the trees to deal with the mitigation of the removals. So here's the landscape plan. The landscape plan also has somewhat evolved, particularly in, in meetings that the applicants had with the residents here on Oakdale. I believe this, this latest plan, which is in your packages, did include some enhancements of the landscaping here across from one of the neighbors, and I'll let them be specific to that. But what's important is they do have the required 20-foot buffer on their property, which is here, from their property line here. Have that requirement, it's not using any of the right-of-way, which is out here. So they have the 20, and then they have the wall, the screen wall, and all the landscaping in there that is required by your code for this project on this perimeter out here. And then it does then, I'm sorry, I'm hitting you in the head. Then there's the landscaping that comes around the corner. Interior, they are have, preserving some existing trees as well as planting some new trees. So that they have, they have a landscape plan that I believe is consistent with your code. Again, they can give you some more specifics on that plan. And I will say, they have worked with the residents here about how this landscaping here would work. The other, just point, point to note is there's 20, there's another 60 feet of right-of-way on Oakdale before you get to the property lines on this side. So there's a pretty significant separation between the parking lot and the folks' property lines on the other side. This is the hardscape plan. So what this is showing is the screen wall. So they are installing a solid six-foot screen wall that'll run here along 5th, come along Oakdale, and then come around here on 6th Avenue. So a part of the agreement, part of your code does say, and this is what they did, you know, they're able to make the wall jog to avoid trees, avoid other impacts, so they are doing that. It has, but they are doing those well, which was a request, is as they come around and as they get to right about here, actually right about here, the wall then goes down to three feet as it gets close to that driveway. But at that point, they're no longer across from any of the residential that's across 6th Avenue on Oakdale, so maintains the six-foot wall for the residential that's across 6th on Oakdale, maintains a six-foot wall that's here. So that's the location, and that's the requirement of your code in, in your Town Center Design Districts is with that wall. So now we'll get to the buildings. What you're seeing here, this is what was presented to the Development Review Board at their meeting on June 20th that they reviewed and had their comment on. As you see later in my staff report of the presentation, the comment from the Development Review Board on this and part of the recommendation was for them to, to make changes to that, that, oops, to that elevation, to provide for, you know, better distinction between these 20-foot segments, whether it's through color, materials, or, you know, roof treatments along here. That was the primary comment and that the DRB had for them moving forward to you all for this consideration. So that's what they saw. This is what's been submitted for your consideration in response to the Development Review Board comments. I will not get heavily into this, I'll let them, the applicant, address what they did. They have done now, they have put in different colors, materials when here, they've actually increased these parapets up here higher. So they have made an intent to, to have the better differentiation. Again, I'll let them and their architect give you more specifics about this, but they did make revisions. One of the things I do want to point out specifically here on this tower, on the DRB plan, this tower here was about 26 or 28 feet. They get a little bit higher here. This tower and this tower is about 31 feet. However, your code allows 35 feet, and here's the existing brick building that's just the north of them. It's at 35, and the building next to them at their height, but they are within the allowance of the height within your code. And that's, that 31 is just at the corners, at these towers for that. These are some more images, a little bit more detail of it. One of the things I'll point out is they have not a flat front on their facade. It, there's little cut-ins here along it to give it some relief along the front. This is on the other side, similar look, and the different materials are here down on the bottom of that sheet. Here's a rendering of the building. This would be the southeast corner from Main and 6th, so 6th is this way and Main is this way. And this is looking, this is the angled corner there at Main and 6th at the roundabout, and you can kind of see that, that rendering of what that looks, and then the rendering at the bottom is on the other side of, of the building over at 5th and Main Street. And this is what that rendering looks like. One more. This is at, from 6th Avenue, this is if you're driving west into the town. This would be the parking back here, this would be the courtyard in here, and this would be the corner of Main and 6th here, so that would be what that actually would look like. And this final one at the bottom is looking from the north corner, so this is looking, this was looking at it from that, from that, the courtyard's in here, and that's that side of the building. This is the building that, side that would be along 5th Avenue or near 5th Avenue. This is the wall, screen wall that's been revised. Initially, the screen wall was white, didn't look like this. What has been presented, being presented to you tonight is, doesn't show up well on the screen, but it's more of a beige color now, and this has been reviewed with the neighbors. I wasn't at the last meeting, so I'll let the applicant speak to their last meeting, but it is my supportive of this look. They did just advise me for the meeting, it's not a major change, this brick area down here is now going to be paint at the request of the neighbors, of the residents. They didn't want that part, they'd rather see it painted. So that, that will be a change from what you see today. If this gets approved, they will make that adjustment, and I believe their presentation will show it that way, what you'll see. But minor change to the wall, but that's, that's where the wall has come out to. One note, and maybe I'll let Heather talk about this one because this comes from Heather. Or you want to talk about it, or you want me to talk about it?
Yes. So I just wanted to point out that your land development code expressly states and can't look at specifically for approval, and the elevations can be looked at, but it's not something you can base your denial of the project on. And I have a lot more information, if anybody's interested about quasi-judicial public hearings, that we can discuss if the issue comes up, but I think we just want to point out that you need to look at the consistency of the project.
Our next part is, there is a development agreement that's part of what's the ordinance that you had before you this evening, and this will assure that what gets approved is what gets built. And an important part is the comment we've heard from residents is, what happened, somebody else is going to do it. Well, with this development agreement, these requirements, these plans run with the land. Anybody that buys this or takes control of this after the folks sitting here today, they still have to do this. Otherwise, they have to come back through the whole process all over again and go through everything like they just did. So this, just because it changes hands doesn't get anybody out of any of these requirements. So that development agreement, as I stated, has the transportation mitigation payment of the $47,000, and it clarifies that the water being provided by Orange County Utilities, town with no responsibility, the septic permitting, and also the stormwater, so things I've already discussed. In terms of the uses, all the uses that would go there or could go there are uses that have to be consistent with your Town Center Overlay, your zoning code and your comprehensive plan, and it has a list of uses. Those are listed within your, your development agreement. Everything that they've talked to the town about is all consistent with that, so there isn't an issue with that. The hardware store that they've talked about is a permitted use within this area as long as it doesn't have outdoor storage, and that gets to my next point. So we have it very clear in this development agreement as well as we did in the ordinance 20 from 2021, as well as it's in your code, that the only type of outdoor display that's allowed in the town is sanctioned special events. Now, you know, that could be a town sanction thing for a business there that would get approved through the town's process, doesn't have to be a town-wide event. Well, with this development agreement, these requirements, these plans, run with the land. Anybody that buys this or takes control of this after the folks sitting here today, they still have to do this. Otherwise, they have to come back through the whole process all over again and go through everything like they just did. So this, just because it changes hands, doesn't get anybody out of any of these requirements. So that development agreement, as I stated, has the transportation mitigation payment of the $47,000. Again, it clarifies that the water being provided by Orange County Utilities, town with no responsibility, septic permitting, and also the stormwater, so things I've already discussed. In terms of the uses, all the uses that would go there or could go there are uses that have to be consistent with your Town Center overlay, your zoning code, and your comprehensive plan, and it has a list of uses. Those are listed within your development agreement. Everything that they've talked to the town about is all consistent with that, so there isn't an issue with that. The hardware store that they've talked about is a permitted use within this area, as long as it doesn't have outdoor storage, and that gets to my next point. So we have it very clear in this development agreement, as well as we did in the ordinance 20 from 2021, as well as it's in your code, that the only type of outdoor display that's allowed in the town is during special events. Now, you know, that could be a town sanction thing for a business there that would get approved through the town's process, doesn't have to be a town-wide event. But they are subject to the same standard as every other business is on Main Street. Nothing different, they are the same. And that's the big lesson to say, for me to put out here. We also put hours of operation between 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM for that, given the proximity to the residential area. We thought that was important to have that limitation on those hours of operation, so that is part of your agreement. For the buildings and screen walls, we have the statement in there also about the site plans, that, again, all development has to be consistent with those plans. It does provide some language for, as you all know in construction, when you get right down to it, sometimes things aren't exactly the same. But any change has to be fully compliant and has to get approved by the town manager. I don't anticipate anything like that occurring, but we just have to be realistic that that can happen, as things happen. Anything that would be significant would then require it to come back to you all for approval. So it wouldn't be anything significantly, anything major at all, be minor details of it. So there's language in there. In terms of the dumpster, it is going to be screened. We actually have a condition to say it also needs to be covered at the property. We did have some concerns of some residents, we think that's probably best sanitation-wise as well. And parking, again, they got to provide a site plan. The tree mitigation and protection, it's got to be consistent with, in the plans that you have before you this evening. There's the site lighting, all the site lighting that they're providing has to be shielded, meaning the light goes down, doesn't go out to impact the residents. That is what they're doing on the property and on the project. It is shielded lighting. We also have conditions that we pulled forward from the ordinance 2021, that we pulled them here, about construction management. These aren't all of them, but these are, I think, more the significant ones. So in terms of when they start construction, there will be limitation on their construction hours, which is between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM, Monday through manager. That condition is consistent with all your other projects that have been planned in developments, like we have going on now with subdivision there on Sixth. I don't like to remember that one, so I forget its name all the time. And then when Estancia was built and all that. So that's a standard condition that the town does in your PUDs, nothing unusual. There's no staging and storage of equipment or materials off-site, so it all has to be maintained on this two acres, as well as parking for the folks that are working. We can't have that impact on the adjacent neighborhood of that work. During construction, the site has to be screened from view, and they can't put any signage, any advertising on the out. Again, that was a condition that was in your 2020 ordinance, we just brought that forward, and helped to minimize that impact on the residents that are adjacent to there. Like any project or development here in the town of Windermere, they have to maintain their proper cement erosion and dust control, be consistent with the MPDS or National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, those requirements, to make sure that they manage that through their construction. There's also a requirement for proper security of the construction site, and it has the ability for the town, if the police chief and the town manager find a problem, for the town to step in and make it get improved. So it does have an enforcement part there. It also provides a timeframe to begin construction for 20 years again and come forward. So it has an 18-month timeline for construction commencement. There is some provisions in there for an extension if needed, with the town council's approval, but we just want to keep the project moving if this does get approved with that. So that's the summary of the development agreement. So again, as I said, the Development Review Board did review this project at their meeting on June 20th, and based on everything that was submitted, all the testimony, all the discussion, they did recommend approval of the project with their two conditions. The one was related to the buildings that I spoke about previously, you know, doing improvements of buildings, as well as working with, with the roofs. And then their second condition was on the screen wall, for them to continue to work with the residents on Oakdale to try to get, to have that screen wall meet the acceptance of those residents. So what I have on my slide and what I've presented, they have made revisions in response to the DRB's building comments, and they also have met with the residents after DRB. They actually met with them right before your meeting in July to go over the screen wall, and against my understanding, I believe the residents are supportive of the screen wall as presented to you this evening. So the DRB does recommend approval with those two conditions. And that is the end of my presentation. Questions now? And again, I know the developer has a presentation as well.
Regarding the parking spaces regulated and approved by the fire department, what, how are they regulated?
Well, no, just the ones in the...
Yeah, those five or six.
The loading area, because just to be sure that they weren't concerned...
What does that mean, though?
They didn't need them for, like, putting their fire truck there or something like that, so we wanted to be sure that they were okay and they were fine with that, did not have...
So they just, like, if fire truck has to come in, then they have to make sure that...
It'll just stop in the middle of the parking lot.
Okay. And after construction, if there's damage to trees that comes out at that point, do we have a process?
We have a provision in here, in the development as well. They would have to replace that tree, consistent with your code, which means, now, your replacement requirement is at time of planting, it's a minimum of two inches DBH, minimum, I believe, of a height of eight feet, with the ability to go to a minimum, can't remember the DBH, I believe it's eight inches, and a height of 15. So they would have to replace the tree.
Okay, thank you.
Robert? I forgot to read it. You want me to read it now, or do you read it at the end after both presentations?
Give me your application.
All right. Applicant?
Good evening. Trey Vick with V3 Capital Group. Legitimately, one of my favorite things to do in development is present in public hearings, and you just stole my joy. Because I don't have a whole lot left to say, to be honest, but there are a couple points that Brad alluded to that I feel like I can provide some more clarity on. I just need to find them here. I'll also say that I certainly appreciate everyone's time on council, with staff, our team. It has been a process, but the process, I think, has produced something that, you know, certainly subject to approval tonight, I think will be something the town's going to be proud of, and something that, with that said, I'll address, I think really the wall and the elevations were the two major things that I think were relevant to feedback we got from DRB to now, so I just can provide that color. You saw a lot of these renderings, so I'll just kind of fast-forward to the last one, which is where our final version is. Which I think, again, a lot of things that have come out of our feedback have produced what I think is a better product. I personally like this a lot better than what was all the red brick building. So kind of the major items here, let's see, before I mess this up, yeah. We see now two different styles and colors of brick, all one consistent red brick. And then the other kind of larger change is these parapits. There was a lot of desire to see what you would see in a traditional downtown where you have different, and what you don't catch here is the side view that shows a lot of relief, and there's a picture in here that you'll see a little more of it, but this covers different styles of parapits, different styles of window coverings, different styles of brick, and I really think it's captured as close as you could in a single building to show the storefronts. It does change in accordance to your code, and so I think that was a really good point of feedback. I actually also like the corner clips that we were able to do. I think it provided, it hurt us on square footage a little bit, but I think the product came out nice with that. So that was one point that Brad had alluded to that I could elaborate on. This gives you another kind of view to where you'll see the relief on the roof line. It's kind of a section cut, and so you'll even have some of that relief on the back of the building, which I think will look nice. And then that's just another piece of the smaller building. And then these were the renderings you've already seen. So the last thing that was discussed was the wall. You know, we went through a lot of iterations, and I would commend the residents of Oakdale for being engaged with us on that. We want to say three times to go through this. It was a sensitive topic, for sure, for good reason, it's in their backyard. And it's evolved from what we ultimately landed on, so it was originally a brick veneer wall. We originally talked about having possibly vines on the wall, and so the way we landed here was a collective effort. We are going to have, it doesn't get captured in this picture well, but it's a precast brick stamping on that panel. So as opposed to a veneer, which could have maintenance challenges, and this being a precast stamped concrete, it's going to be painted, you're only going to deal with paint, it's not going to be white, I know that was a big concern, and the veneer is subject to all kinds altogether. We lost the brick veneer down here at the bottom, which Brad alluded to, only for the fact that we would have brick on brick, and it just didn't make sense. So really, that was sort of at the residents' opinion, and we totally agree. So again, I think even the wall was heavily discussed, something you probably don't think about a lot in a project, but a lot of effort and intention was put into that. So that's the final product, and I think it's meant to disappear, not stand out, is kind of the intention of that wall. And with the landscaping and the buffering, I think will look nice. The last thing was this landscape plan, and Brad is correct, we added, there were some gaps in landfill, all that in, and then we've committed in the process as we go, you know, landscaping's pretty easy. If there's some minor tweaks that the residents want to see, they can address that. And then the trees that we're donating through this tree mitigation program, I know that some of the residents are collaborating with the town on location and placement to maybe use some of that in the right-of-way to create some further screening. So I think that's going to be done independent of us, but that was another takeaway from what was going on. So with that said, I'll stop talking. I think you guys have seen a lot of the project and what's going on, and just address any questions, concerns, further comments, and go from there.
Mayor, I'm sorry. We do need to, since this is a public hearing, need to open it up for public comment, and then once we close that portion of the public hearing, then we can go ahead and move forward to town council comment.
Correct.
We still need the reading now.
Robert, would it be appropriate to ask questions now, or after we close?
Afterwards. Typically, what's been done in the past is, there's any public comment, then it's taken during the second and final public hearing, and then after the public hearing is closed, then it's opened back up as a town council meeting.
All righty. Do we have any public comment? Please, Mr. Withers, please approach the podium. State your name and your address, please.
Steven Withers, 712 Main Street. I think they've done what we've asked them to do. I do think it'd be very prudent that we see the materials in, actual materials, the brick color and the things and this sort of stuff. I'd like to know that we had a chance to approve all those materials that we've seen pictures of, and we want to see the real things as they get further along in the construction. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The public hearing, I do need to read the ordinance. So ordinance 2023-02, in ordinance of the town of Windermere, Florida, to approve a development agreement for the final development plan and major development site plan for the, for the downtown, Windermere Downtown Property Plan Unit Development on 2.17 acres, more or less, of real property located within the Town Center District overlay at the northeast corner of Main Street and Sixth Avenue, East Sixth Avenue, and more specifically described here in providing for applicability, severability conflicts, and an effective date. Close the public hearing at 6:47 and reopen the regular town council meeting. Council, any questions?
Yes, a few for the applicant. Just some clarifying questions. You're bringing water in from Orange County, does that include fire suppression?
I believe so, yes.
And will there be any fire hydrants included in the project as well?
One, I believe. One, we have one fire hydrant, and we've committed to working with Fire Department on its final location, I believe.
Yeah, Councilmember Davie, that was one of the reviews that we got from Ocoee Fire, that when they go through building permitting, they will coordinate with them on where Ocoee Fire wants the fire hydrant to be located.
Awesome, okay. And then questions in the past with respect to truck traffic going through there? I believe it's an HS20 vehicle going through, and there was a concern about the corner from your parking lot onto Fifth Street. Has all that been resolved and the traffic geometry is set?
If you look at this, we made some adjustments to the geometry here, which widened that to allow for that turning movement to accomplish the concerns and mitigate that. I think there were some curbing changes, too, that were also integrated into that to avoid people jumping curves and things. So yes, that comment was certainly integrated into our plan.
Okay, great. Obviously, with the cutoff from Sixth Street, with the traffic concerns we have, there is some cut-through traffic. Has there been any discussion or consideration of putting a raised pedestrian walkway or speed bumps to forego some of that cut-through traffic from Sixth Street to Fifth onto Main Street?
I will say there's some natural traffic calming that'll occur in there, because while it's not a roundabout, but certainly the placement of that landscape island will be a kind of a calming effect that you'd have at a roundabout. You know, you don't have a lot of straight runway shots like you'd see people racing through. I know just from other projects and experience, speed bumps aren't well-received by many, including emergency management personnel, and so would we prefer to have any of that? But I do think that with the landscape island and the calming feature of that and not having direct straight runways, the roundabout should function in a way that keeps traffic from coming through us. We'd almost be a more of a slowdown in some instances than others. So that's the extent of it.
Okay. With respect to the South Florida Water Management District, I understand you don't need a permit, but is there a stamped drawing that certifies that your design meets the criteria?
Yeah, I think that one's always been an interesting comment, so it is certified and all, but because of our size, we become a self-certification, so basically, we get to hinge the certified engineers over here to where if they're wrong, their license is all the way for that, so.
That's why I'm asking.
No offense, but...
Yes, so Councilmember Davie, what we had as part of the record, we will have the sign and sealed drainage grading plan. We also have the drainage report that Mr. Geiger did, that's also signed and sealed that shows that compliance. So we do have that as part of the record.
Okay. Going back to traffic, understand that we've lowered the wall on the last portion of the wall along Sixth Avenue, or Sixth Street, rather. Have we evaluated the sightlines for the traffic turning right onto Sixth? Are you sure that that wall isn't, and doesn't inhibit sightlines?
Yep, and I'm probably not on the greatest slide to show you that, but I think I can depict what I'm about to say. So this is the wall back here, because this is the landscape areas. So if you have a right-hand turn going on here, you're going to already be on the far, you know, right side of that drive-out, plus this is going to be three feet all the way from here. So I think personally, you'll have, even if you're sitting in a car here, you'll have pretty clear, unobstructed sightlines, and given the speed of traffic there, I think you have plenty of safety there, especially with us having a median separation here, pushing traffic even further.
Commissioner, the stop bar for that movement is beyond the wall.
Okay, great. Trey, the last thing is more of a comment, and it's kind of, it's kind of, because I was just briefed on the Historic Preservation Board about some of the design work that's being done for the town hall, you may want to get with the historic architect that's doing some work here, and maybe pull some of the architectural cues over from the town hall over to that as well. And Robert, you're going to have to keep me honest here as far as that architect's name...
Oh, Tom Price.
Yeah, Tom Price. So he's done a lot of design work for this and pulled some, you know, really all some of the work we're going to pull forward. I'd recommend that you reach out to him and maybe pull some of those architectural cues over to your development as well.
We have no problem reaching out to him and having a conversation and collaborating with him on it.
Okay. That's all I have.
Councilperson, Robert?
How many businesses are there?
So this building here is just one, that's Ace, and then you'll have one, two, three, four, five, six. Six, I believe, is the final tally. Possibly seven in this building, but these suites are only 600 square feet. So these are quite small. Suites here are between 1,600 and 1,800 square feet, but that's what it looks like will be those.
Six to seven, and who decides what goes in there? What's the process?
So we've curated kind of our tenant mix to date. We have to obviously conform with the allowable uses in your town and any nuisance uses, which we obviously wouldn't want either. So like, for example, we've had an opportunity to put a fitness studio in there, like a... like a high-end Pilates studio, which we declined to do because to us, that detracts from the parking of everybody else. When you have shift change or class change, I mean, all that was a problem. So we haven't had a ton of formal requirement per se, eight tenants at most, so we're going to get the best eight we can get. And we really only do have one availability left, and it's only the 600 square foot space. Don't have all the leases signed yet, but letters of intent and kind of focus on where we're going to be. So I would suspect we'll be 100% leased before we stick a shovel in the ground.
And I know you and I had a meeting over here at the moment, pretty much said that four of the six are going to be some of the people already there.
Yes. We are keeping several- Correct, yep. There's two, I mean, there's two signed leases of existing tenants already done that are moving over, so yes. And that, for the record, we did, before we even marketed to third parties. Kind of bird in the hand is easier than two in the bush.
And thanks for meeting with all of us like that, and we want to know a lot of things, which is good, as far as the talk.
Our pleasure, yep.
Counselperson Rose?
On the back wall, did you guys, I know you said it's going to be stamped concrete and then painted?
Yes, ma'am.
You guys want to look at maybe doing integral color, so you don't have to worry about the painting and coming off?
Certainly something that we can look at.
I've had good success with that in the past. And also, assuming that we approve this tonight, do you have an estimated start date, demo date?
I would say, I would hope it's in October, but it's probably going to be November. No offense to the PM. I'm probably more realistic than most of my team on how that's going to happen. And could be January to be, the way the holidays go. But we have some notification provisions, and we want to make sure that everybody has time to do it, and we got to get permitted and some surveys and things like that.
Anybody else? Alright, for the record, I will recuse myself from a vote for this. I've got interest in, so I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance 2023-02.
Second.
A motion to approve by Counselperson David and a second with Counselperson Rose. And a vote begin with Counselperson Strup.
Aye.
Aye.
Long-term, aye.
And we pass.
Thank you. Thank you.
Why not?
Oh, vape. I thought you said a bake shop.
A bake shop, I'm good with that, but.
Yeah. Absolutely. Alright. Onto new business contracts. We have, first we have an RFP 2023-02, Debris Monitoring and Public Assistant Consulting Services. Robert?
Yes, Mayor Proton. Again, for each of the disciplines relative to emergency services, we need to do a RFP through the procurement to make sure that we're following all the guidelines, and then all three of these are related to that. In order for us to get any one is going to be for debris monitoring and public assistance. That would be raw stain. This RFP was submitted, gave them 30 days, they responded, there was two that responded. On all of these, Tanya, Travis, Brian, and John Fitzgibson were the selection committee. They reviewed the two submittals, and the recommendation is to go forward with raw stain.
Gotcha. Is rod stain the current one we have?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Counsel, questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Counselperson Rose, second Counselperson David, and with Counselperson Rose.
Aye.
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 Aye. And we pass 5-0. Number two, RFP 2023-03 Disaster Debris Removal Services Agreement.
Yes, Mayor Proton, this is, again, related to emergency services contracts. This would be not to slice and dice, but the actual hauling away of the debris to an approved site. Again, the two sites that we typically use is going to be Fernwood and Windermere Recreation Center. For Ian, we use Windermere Recreation Center. There were eight responses, seven which qualified, SP stipulations. There are some on there that were cheaper when you look at the price breakdowns. I think two of them, one was from Mississippi, one's from Alabama, the other one was just a trucking company. But Tanya made sure to call the references, and with Rain or Shine, they were there for us in Irma, and they are here for us at Ian, they're a local company, a local firm, and they're one that you definitely can count on, and they've proven that over the last two major storm events that we've had. So the recommendation was to go with Rain or Shine.
Thank you. Questions?
Motion to approve RFP 2023-03.
Second.
Okay. David, second with Counselperson David. And vote begin with Counselperson Rose.
Aye.
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 Aye. And we pass 5-0. And number three. They did. We were, that was excellent last time, that's for sure. RFP 2023-04, Emergency Tree Removal and Maintenance Services. Robert?
Yes, sir, again, following the same lines. This one is a little bit of a change from our current services contract. We were going to go with T&amp;K Trees Services over EnviroTree. EnviroTree's prices were a little bit hefty. That doesn't mean that if the services aren't what we expect, we cannot go back to Enviro. This would not only be for emergency services during major events, but also if a tree falls down during a normal storm event, we would call T&amp;K first. If they don't pick up, then we would go to Enviro.
Okay. Gotcha.
Do you end up contracting with both of them?
We contracted over the second one. We had the same thing pretty much with Dobson's.
I assume the contracts got severability clauses for-
Yes, sir.
So if they have an issue with performance, we can sever them and-
Absolutely.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved, Counselperson David, and begin voting with Counselperson Strup. Aye.
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 And we pass 5-0. Alright, on to liaison reports. Anybody have anything to report?
Just Historic Preservation Board, I alluded to it when we were talking about the development of 500 block. We did have a review with the Historic Preservation Board of some architectural development for this. It's going to be presented to the town council in future town council meetings or workshops. Some more to follow, but that did occur, and it was approved by the Historic Preservation Board, so.
Wonderful. Any others?
Just a reminder that Run Among the Lakes is coming up.
Gotcha.
It's coming up, we just, we don't have our meeting until Thursday, so might as well announce it now.
No problem, absolutely. Wonderful.
What do you mean?
Well, proven, they made.
Oh, okay.
Absolutely. Wonderful.
Just real quick, Chief, thanks for your leadership on, you know, I know we've had some leadership changes in the police department. I'm hearing that those were, are well received, you know, well received throughout both by the department and by residents, so good job.
Alright, on to staff reports. Town manager, Robert Smith?
Yes, sir, it seems like August and September are going to be meeting months. We have our, we'll have my Q and A tomorrow night at 7:00 PM. The town hall, the second public information workshop's going to be on August 16th. We did reach out to the Secretary of the Interior to see if any amendments to the town hall that are attached to town hall will impact any of its historical significance. We're looking at putting in low-level lighting on the Fifth and Forest parking lot. We're going to have two as well. We don't want another recurrence of the Fifth Avenue paving. It's going to be low-level lighting that the berm's going to be covering, so there's not going to be a lot of light pollution, but it is very dark back there, not only for people that are going to our events, going to the brewery, but also for the employees that are out there as well, so it's more of a safety issue. There will be a workshop in August, we'll be discussing events on August 22nd. We did have the Lake Street and Lake Down. We'll be meeting with Kimley Horn Associates and figuring out the parameters of where the fencing would be, and then bring that back to you hopefully sometime in September. We're still waiting on contracts for the HMGP grants. Appropriation agreements, we filled out P. We're still waiting on FDOT, not only for the federal appropriations, but also the state appropriations where we need lab certification. Cops and Bobbers is going to be on September 9th, which is the same date as the Healthy Selfie 5K, so there might be a little bit of conflict there. Again, we discussed Run Among the Lakes, the Fall Festival, that's going to be in-
October?
October 14th, so that's right, after the Run Among the Lakes. Budget hearings, again, we have two in September. FEMA, we received our first repayment, $447,000. The first day of school is on Thursday, and I can't wait. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes.
Is there any boat house updates? That you can talk about?
Well, you can probably answer.
Counselor Ramos is up next, anyways.
No, nothing. The judges are taking their sweet old time, so.
The last judge we had said he would have signed the order one way or the other, I think by the end of that week or the next week, and that's still been since July, I think, 18th.
That's why I was asking.
We do have a more, is it next week? Talking about consolidation and all that stuff, so I think there's a hearing next week, maybe we can get a status update.
Okay, thank you.
Robert, the low-level lighting is still in private auto here.
Yes, sir.
I don't know what that means against, because of the way you built up this. So is anyone familiar with what that means in relation to like, make some examples of before we buy it? Because-
Yeah.
The library, we changed it twice, and still it is-
That's not low-level. Yeah. You'd be looking at little bollards or anything like that, you know. What you typically see, like, I would say juiced-up landscape lighting. Typically, you see them at theme parks, looking at adding any additional lighting pollution.
Do you want to fix that lighting? I know it's something kind of a place, maybe I can talk to you later about it. I'll put it in.
Yeah.
Changed it twice, and Travis knows fast to fix it, but it's literally-
We'll work with the library. We actually own the building, so we can have them take those off and put in additional lighting or different lighting.
She'll call me once a month, and then I'll- I'm asking, they're doing it, Travis goes over, he's changing three times, I think.
Yeah.
But still, this is bright L E B shooting in there, so.
Will do.
Hey. I understand. Counselor Ramos, do you have anything else?
No, updates on what we need to start doing with ordinances for something the legislature's requiring for a business impact estimate for almost all ordinances that the town will be adopting, so. We'll have a nice discussion about that next month.
Wonderful.
Hey.
I know there'll be more questions, so we can kind of keep it as a work in progress, but if I get questions from one of you, I'll make sure I just send out the information to everyone.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. It was fun to look at somebody else's financial disclosure forms, right? Yeah, that was fun, that was interesting. If there's any other ones you want me to get for you.
Chief?
I was going to ask, did the Congress fill one out as well?
I think they filled something completely different out for, at the federal level, except for Trump, but I think other ones-
But can we, do we have access to those, or no? Because it's different?
I don't know.
Okay.
We should be, it should be public record.
It's just stuff, though, remember the Supreme Court justice didn't have to disclose-
Oh, they don't have anything, they don't have to declare.
Different rules.
Yes, for those who make the rules.
Exactly.
Chief? I think I covered most of it in an email the other day, so I tell the guys, enjoy the summer, because September's heating up, and I think every weekend we have an event. All the events Robert mentioned, also the September 30th is our bunk bed build, so it's certain information about that. Again, thanks for the appreciation, I sent you guys an email out about the transition, so those have gone over very well, and as smooth as they can be, so I appreciate that, and, really, that's all I have right now.
Thank you. Clerk Burke Alter? Nothing? No?
We're not, we're not letting her build bunk beds, so.
Well, then let's call this meeting closed at 7:09 PM.